I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 meeting, special meeting of the Frankfurt Plant Board. This is being conducted pursuant to Executive Order 2005 issued by the Governor, which allows this type of meeting during, as during this time when we're dealing with the coronavirus. So Ms. Poe, if you would, call the row.
Member Hale?
Here.
Member Kevan?
Here.
Member Mason?
Here.
Member Snyder?
Here.
We have a call. Next item is Item 2, approval, review and approval of the meetings of March 17th, 2020 meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review them? And do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes of the March 17th, 2020 meeting.
Second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor of accepting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted. Item 3.1, Mr. Dent, do you want to give us a snapshot, overview of where we are in the financial statements for this period?
Absolutely. Good evening, Board. In your board packet being in on page 19, ending on page 91, we have for you our financial statements for the nine months ending March 31st, 2020. As you can see, year over year, we have improved the strength of our balance sheet. Our revenue is in line with budget and prior year figures, and we have reduced our expenses through March. So you wouldn't know that we were going through a healthcare crisis at this time. Things look right in line with what we thought. We continue to pay attention to how things look and how this current economic situation impacts the plant board. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about where we are at this time.
From our experience so far, David, we're what, just one billing cycle into this? Kind of the economic situation we're in?
Yes, in March, we closed our office and everyone began to change operations mid through mid-March. We closed our office right the time that we ended our second cycle in March, and we just ended our second cycle for April. So we'll be able to give you some numbers through April here in the next week and a half or so.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any other questions? And all this information you're talking about, David, is posted online, right?
Yes, sir. It's in the board packet for anyone to look at and check it out.
Okay. Does anybody, if there's no other questions, do I have a motion to accept the financials?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? No objection? Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Financials are accepted. Item number five on, item number four actually, website comments. Kathy, do we have anything? Oh, Kathy?
We lost her.
Yeah. Let's go on then to item number five. We can come back there. On telecommunications, do we have an update on that?
Yes, we would like Adam to address that.
Okay, Adam?
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't look like we have Adam available at the moment.
Okay. Let's move to customer service report. Is that you, David?
We're going to have Kathy Lindsey give us an update on it for our customers during this time.
I think Kathy's muted, so she might not be aware that she's muted.
Yes.
Okay, well, we just wanted to take a moment just to fill in the board, and I'm sure you know, but if any customers are watching, to let them know what we're doing to continue to provide our essential services and that we have been prepared, our management team has been prepared, preparing for this time for a couple of months, and we're doing everything we can to provide and maintain our critical services of electric, water and telecom. We did close, a lot has happened since the last time we met. We closed the lobby for walk-in customers, but we still have our drive-thru open for cash payments. We have the drop box out front for checks and money orders. And then we're also, my.fpb.cc, if you don't have it already, go to that, and you can, there's lots of things you can do on there. You can make your payment, you can check your usage, you can check your payment history, and there's all kinds of other things on there. You have access to all of your account information, just literally at your fingertips. You don't have to leave your house.
What about customer wait time to get issues resolved or calling in or the drive-thru? How's that going?
I can speak to that, Mr. Kevan. When you look at our numbers, our goal is about a minute response time to when people's call in, and during this time, we've been right around that number. We've been, customers are scheduling directly with the telecom department when it comes to telecom installation. And because we've suspended non-pay disconnects and late fees, that has really allowed us to stay in that one-minute response time.
Does anybody have any other questions for Kathy, the board members?
I think, Gary, did you want us to show that video?
Sure, we can do it at the right time, or we can show in the later at a general manager.
Do we have a, have we got Adam on, or do we want to do the video while we're getting Adam on?
Good evening. I'm here. I was about that. I had to restart. Good afternoon. So right now, we are, as the board knows, we closed our lobby or closed our in-home installation around March 26. Even though we've closed the installation, we are still doing installs, and we're basically calling them self-installs. And so basically, the customer can pick up the equipment, we can drop the equipment off. We'll do everything we can at the back of the house. And after we get that done, we will call the customer and walk them through actually making all the connections and testing the service. We, right now, we're, it's probably about a 95% success rate. We've had to do some temporary installations and work with landlords and homeowners to do some temporary stuff, but the most important thing was getting these customers turned on. So as it stands today, we're still taking orders, we're still doing trouble calls. We're just approaching them a little bit different.
So is, how's it doing? I mean, are we getting new customers in both internet and on cable, or just internet, or where's it?
Both. We're actually, we had an uptick this month in your report. You'll see there was an uptick of cable customers and internet. We're about 30%, if you look from March 1st till today, we're about a 30% increase in orders over this time last year for internet service. Not quite as much for cable TV, but really on internet.
Do any board members have any questions for either Adam or Kathy? Yeah, actually, John, I've got one. Adam, let me ask you a question. It seems like the success rate's pretty good. What kind of time is it in terms of getting, walking through the self-install? How does that time relate to the times they would normally do in the house with the installs?
I would say it's almost, I mean, it's hit or miss, but if we have trouble, it's double. You have some customers that can get to the device and go through it pretty quick, and some that, you know, are having a little bit more trouble, so.
Really hit or miss, though, you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. As I understand it, Gary, all the other department reports, it's all the information's in the board packet. Unless a board member has a specific question, we'll move past those and move on to the action items. Is that agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay. Next item is Item 6.1, action item. Consider approving the INSP renewals. Harvey, do you want to discuss that?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Harvey.
Okay, great. Thanks. The INSP network is a NCTC renewal. It's a term through March 31st of 2024. INSP is a preferred cable channel, which is on 164, previously known as the Inspiration Network. We've carried it since 2015. There's no fee associated with this, with this channel since we've launched it, and this renewal continues that trend. So yeah, we're just asking for a renewal of the INSP network. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Does anybody have any questions of Harvey?
Nope.
If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adopted. Item number 6.2, action item. Consider approval of professional service agreement with Power Centric Solutions and task order number one with PCS for $3,200. Travis McClure. Travis, are you with us?
Hello. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, Item 6.2 is an action item for a professional service agreement with Power Centric Solutions. Power Centric is a new firm, but the engineers that worked there have performed work for the plant board for many years. So we're familiar with the people, but the organization is new, so it's a new professional service agreement. We've also got task order number one, have PCS evaluate our equipment testing program and make recommendations for any future testing equipment purchases. That first task order is for $3,200, which will come out of the substation maintenance budget. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Travis? If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion's adopted. Item 6.3. Consider approval, ratification of the emergency paid sick leave and the emergency family and medical leave policies effective April 1st, 2020. Diane Snyder?
Okay, hi. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. There were two policies that we needed to create to comply with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. The employee paid, or I'm sorry, the emergency paid sick leave policy, which provides up to 80 hours of paid time off related to COVID-19 absences, and then an emergency family medical leave policy that provides up to 12 weeks of leave for school or childcare closings. So if the board has any questions about those policies, the general manager did approve them to go into effect April 1st.
And these are all according to the new federal law that was passed, is that correct?
Correct.
Have a, do anybody have any questions, Diane? And I assume employees have gotten the information, they know what the, what these benefits are and how they can access them?
Yes. Yes, we did distribute it to the employees, and we've had some instances of where employees have had to use some of the leave.
Okay. With no questions, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's adopted. Item 6.4. Consider changes to the FPV employee health policy to comply with the Families First Corona Response Act and the Cronus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. Diane, you're still up.
Okay, well, these are all changes to our health plan related to covering COVID-19. Primarily, it covers the testing, both the test and the office visits, cover vaccinations once they're available, of course, allow for prescription refills, expand telehealth coverage, and then allow for some expenses to be paid through flexible spending that are, you know, weren't previously permitted under flexible spending. And there's a copy of one of the amendments to the health plan in the board package, and I just received today the, another amendment which would cover the telehealth, and I'm still waiting for the one about the flexible spending. But these are all changes that were required to make under the CARES Act.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any.
Any board member have any questions? John, are these going to have, Diane, are these going to have any financial impact? The adoption, this paying for the testing and things like that?
Well, I would think that it would have some financial impact, but I have not gotten a, you know, a cost estimate from our agent or our consultant to request that.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion to accept these changes to the personnel plan. Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's adopted. Item 6.6. Consider approval of professional services agreement between Strand Associates Inc. and FWPB for services related to final design, construction of the reservoir in an amount of $342,500. Mr. Billings?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because it doesn't look like my camera is working. So I will go forward without the camera. In October of 2018, the American Water and Infrastructure Act was signed into federal law. It requires drinking water systems serving more than 3,000 people to develop a risk and resilient assessment and emergency response plan. The law specifies the components of the risk assessment in emergency response plan this address and establishes the deadlines by which water systems must certify completion to the EPA. Our deadline for the risk assessment is December 31st of 2020. Our deadline for the ERP is June 30th, 2021. We sent out a request for proposals to several engineering firms. Three responses were received. A selection committee consisting of treatment, distribution, engineering, operations and IT personnel reviewed the proposals and recommended HDR to provide the professional services related to the project. As a matter of course, an agreement, scope of services to develop the risk assessment in accordance with regulations have been prepared and included in the board package for review. The, this year's budget included a $50,000 engineering initiative for non-revenue water reduction strategies that ultimately became unnecessary. So staff has proposed in the use of those funds for the risk assessment. The FY21 budget will also include funds for the following emergency response plan. Staff recommends the board approve the agreement with HDR contingent upon insurance requirements and approval by the staff attorney.
And I need to correct, I called item 6.6. This is actually item 6.5, which is professional service agreement with HDR Engineering for services in an amount of 45 for risk and resilient assessment development of the water division. I apologize for that. So David, you described the right item. I called the wrong item. So does any board member have any questions to David on item 6.5? If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. Thank you. Item 6.5, Mr. Billings, you're up again. Now I'll call item 6.6. Approval of professional services between Strand Associates and FWPB for services related to final design and construction of the reservoir in an amount of $342,500. I apologize, David, I just couldn't wait to get to this one.
That's fine. I understand. Thanks to the board's hard work, we made it through planning and zoning. So next step for us is to pick up the pencil and begin work on engineering. As a matter of course, instead of doing a contract addendum, we requested that Strand do a fresh contract that would finish the design up through and include all the construction-related services. The total cost for the contract is $342,500. A breakdown was provided. I'll go through those briefly. $63,000 lump sum for final design, $15,600 lump sum for bidding-related services, $162,100 lump sum for all the construction-related services, that's construction inspection, $40,800 for, and that's not to, time and expenses not to exceed our site landscaping, architectural services, $36,000 to continue the reservoir monitoring program. I think we have four years on that left, and $25,000 for unknown if authorized services, that's time and expenses not to exceed. This year's budget includes funds for both engineering and construction. The upcoming FY21 budget will include $350,000 and $4.75 million for engineering and construction over a two-year period, respectively. The agreement that was provided to the staff attorney for his review, and he does have a few comments to add a little bit later here after I get done. So I guess at this point, I'll turn it over to Hans. We wanted to make a few comments about the contract.
Hello?
Yeah. We can hear you?
Well, I just, the very last clause of that contract has a, has a provision in it that requires a bench trial, which I don't have any problem with, but the board needs to be, needs to be aware of. I don't know what Mr. Leavens, the little thing are, but I don't have any objection to it, but the board needs to be, needs to be aware of that.
Is that unusual for our contracts?
No, sir. I've seen, I've seen different, you have arbitration clauses, you have bench trials. It's just an alternative, alternative to a jury trial, but, but you do waive that, waive that right.
So and a judge could still request, or we could still request mediation or arbitration, right?
You would have, you could have a mediation, yes. It would ultimately be resolved in a, in a bench trial.
Yeah. Jane, do you have any thoughts on that?
I have no objection to the bench trial.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, John, I had a question. When David was talking about the reserve monitoring program, the 36,000, he also said that we have four years left on it, so is that already paid for? Or is that 36,000 additional dollars in?
No, that's a good question. We had a, originally had a five-year monitoring program that went out under a separate contract addendum. We, we got another five-year extension of that. So we're, eventually, we're going to close out all of those addendums that we currently have and cycle over to the new contract. So any remaining work under that addendum, I had them included in this new contract. We may do a reservoir inspection next spring. That's my intention, but if we start construction in January, like we think that we're going to do, we may not do that. So we just needed to bring that remaining item from the previous addendum into this contract.
So I guess my question centers around, is this extra money? Or is it, is this replacing money that we've, that we've already spent or committed? And that money will be freed up?
Yes, sir. This, this item remaining is monies that we were obligated to spend but didn't have to from a previous addendum.
And the other question, the 300, you say there's 350,000 going into the FY21?
Yes, sir.
How much is, how much was budgeted prior to this for 20?
We had $150,000 over two consecutive years for a total of $300,000 budgeted.
So is this an additional, then this 342 here, is this an additional 192,500? Is that what additional cost this year is?
No, sir. We'll, instead of sticking with the 300,000 we had budgeted for engineering, we're going to increase that to $350,000 over a two-year period.
Over the two years. So it's a net 50,000 increase?
Yes, sir, and most of that is due to the landscape architecture.
And that, just to point out, that 40,000 is not the amount we're going to spend on landscaping. That's just for the design and so forth?
That is correct.
Is there any other questions on this? Hey, if not, do I have a motion?
I, I make a motion to approve professional services agreement between Strand Associates and the FPV for services related to the final design and construction of the reservoir in the amount of $342,500.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, any discussion? Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's adopted. Item number seven is informational only. We won't be taking any action on this, but it's information, and I think we're going to have two discussions here. One, an outline for our knowledge and for the public in terms of the timeline for reservoir construction, what we're looking at in general, and then also a discussion in terms of the budget process. And obviously, there's going to be a lot of uncertainties in revenue and some other things, but we do have to, pursuant to state law, have to submit a budget by June 30th to DLG. We can always amend it later, but we do have to budget, and I know Gary and David have been working on a budget, and let them kind of talk about the timing and what we in the board need to be thinking about and for us to give them some guidance at this point in general in terms of that timeline and how we might submit information. Because I assume in May, we're going to need to have a more detailed meeting or a special meeting, and we'll see where we are in terms of meeting in person or continuing to meet virtually. But Gary, you want to take it from here?
Yes, I'll probably ask David then, help us on the schedule and the work on the budget preparation. David?
Absolutely, yes. If you will recall, we submitted a 2020-21 budget timeline we issued back at the end of February. We had a set of timelines and different deadlines that we would have, ultimately resulting in a budget draft to the Board of Directors by our May 20th board meeting. So we are still on track to provide the Board of Directors with a draft, initial draft for review and discussion by our May 20th board meeting. If the Board of Directors, any individual Board of Directors have any projects or initiatives that you specifically would like to have funded or us to consider putting in the budget, having that information to us sooner than later would be helpful, so we can include that in the budget for discussion. Other than that, internally, we're working to get to that deadline. And like you said, Mr. Kevan, this is a, I've been here eight years. This is going to be by far the most unusual budget that we've had to put together. We'll do our best to make the estimates, revenue, expenses, and we do have some, some large, important capital projects we intend to continue to fund. So I'd be glad to answer any questions the board might have on the process.
Let me start off and ask, maybe this is a question, Hans, for you. If a board member wants to submit some ideas to Gary and to David to price out in half so we can discuss in May, do all the board members get to see that? I know we can't discuss it internally among us, but is that something we copied everybody, or do we just send them to price out, and then we all see the response, or what's the appropriate way to do that?
Mr. Kevan, I can just speak to, I know what, in the, in the past, Hans can correct me, but like you said, as long as there's no discussion, I mean, it's helpful for all of us to see what's going to get put in, and we can put those numbers in, show how we can fund it, and be able to, to have that in, that initial discussion would be very helpful.
Okay, so maybe if we could ask this, David, if maybe if this is agreeable to the board, I'm not asking for an action or, but if, let's proceed under the assumption what David just told us, that feel free to send David and Gary the information, CC, the other board members, let them know the kind of things you're asking, so we're not doing redundant work. And David, if you and Hans determine there's any guidelines or anything we need to follow in doing that, let us know as soon as you can. But if not, if everybody in the next few days, anything they want priced out or whatever, could just send to you all, and that way you would have it, and you start pricing it out so we could look at it in May. Does that seem agreeable to all the board members? Yeah. John and Steve, is okay with you?
I'm good with that.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions that, not for tonight, but just as far as things that were in the budget for last year that maybe haven't been done to be carried over into, you know, this upcoming. Like I think the water fountain at Dolly Graham, you know, that was budgeted. I don't think that was done because we were waiting for this, some of the other rivers. some of the other renovations that were being done at Dolly Graham. So those are just some of the things that I have questions on of just some money that was in last year's that wasn't spent about carrying that through through the upcoming year.
Okay. Is anybody else, any other guidance or anything they want to suggest? We're not asking for motions, but either comments or thoughts, if not, assuming we don't get any specific guidance from David or Hans tomorrow, just everybody proceed as soon as you possibly can to to get David and Gary the information so they can start pricing things out for us to look at in May.
Okay, sounds good.
Last item is, David, you want to give us a general idea of the timeline for the reservoir construction?
Let me say one more thing on the last item. I guess my, I have a general comment as it relates to this budget. I think we need to opt to be cognizant of the of the of the situation that we're in and and what our rate payers may be in as we develop the budget. It 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 needs to be sensitive to their needs as much.
Yes. Good point, Steve.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah. Okay, David, you want to bring up anything or go walk us through the reservoir timeline schedule?
Be happy to. The next step for us, now that we have the Strand contract approved, is we need to form the landscape committee. We estimated that after we formed the landscape committee and complete the reservoir design, that that would occur from May through October of this year. Also during that time, I assumed in the construction schedule that Adam would be getting the satellite dishes and the tower relocated. We need to have that done prior to starting construction of the reservoir. Plan to have divisional water approval done by the end of the year. We would like to take bids in January of next year and have the contractor mobilize in March of twenty twenty one and complete construction by December of twenty twenty one.
So when would construction actually start?
March, in the spring of twenty twenty one.
Okay, since in terms of forming the landscape committee, I mean, this is on the item tonight for informational only, in terms of forming the landscape committee, since that was in our plan, the planning and zoning, and the board has previously discussed it. Is that something, Gary, that you can do administratively, that we don't have to take a formal action for you to go on and form that landscape committee?
Well, staff definitely can have a proposal. We will let you know first ahead of time. If you have a concern, definitely you can have your input. I I'm fine with either way, the choices. We will rely on David and David Billings and also the management and also Adam. All of them have a very good working relationship with the neighborhood and other people. So we'll we'll make sure you are included all the.
But you go on and begin the preliminary steps to get all that put in place, so.
Yes.
And to go on and begin developing the bids and everything to get ready to put on street, then we can approve those later, is that right?
Definitely.
Okay. Like I said, we're not asking for a formal action, but does that meet with the board's general understanding of how this would proceed?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just have a question. David Billings, could you send us out the timeline just in an email or something, so we have that in writing, because I'll never remember it?
I'll be happy to.
And probably ought to, and probably David, I'll probably go on and post that email up on the website, too.
We can do that as well.
Does that mean a lot of people are going to have questions about, we want to make sure everybody gets the same information, so that'd be good.
Be happy to.
Any other question about either one of those items? Okay, the next item's pretty controversial. Item eight is adjournment. Does anybody want to object to that?
I object because I I won't be able to see you you all for the next. This is my contact to the outside world.
Mr. Cubine, we we do have, Mr. Lindy, Cassie Lindy has one of.
Oh, that's right, a video to show us, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, let me share my screen. And we'll do this.
My name's Chuck Franklin. I've been with the plant board for twenty years. I've been doing mine work for actually thirty four years. I guess it takes a special type of person to become a lineman. Not everybody can do this job or wants to do this job. Not everybody likes to get up at two or three o'clock in the morning during an ice storm or if it's falling down rain to get out and get the electric back up when it goes out. You never know what you're going to run into. Might be broken poles and you might have six or seven spans of wire down in the backyard in the subdivision that you can't get chucked to. The last ice storm we had, we had Franklin was out and most of everybody was on within two days. You get somebody that's had their lights off for a day or two, I mean, you get the electric back on. Just to see the smile on their face, you really feel like you've accomplished something. My name's Chuck.
That's just another employee portrait that Scott Stafford put together from Media Services. Again, just another effort in us trying to show our customers what our employees do and we are our our people. Our employees are the company. So that's just something we wanted. We had it across channel as a a spot. We have it, we put it on social media, we show it on around ten and and we'll have it on our website.
You and your team really do a good job on these these videos, Kathy, you really do.
Thank you very much. They're a great team. I appreciate everything they do.
Okay, okay, we don't have any other business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.